Good morning, and welcome this morning to the board meeting, the work session, and at this time we'll have the call in order, roll call please.
Mr. Bennington?
Here.
Mrs. Downs?
Here.
Mrs. Eubank?
Here.
Ms. Laramer? Mr. Pullman?
Here. If you could please join with me, the pledge of allegiance.
I want to plead the duty of honor on the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to welcome you to Perrysburg's board meeting here at the Commodore Building. We thank you for those who are attending today, and for those reviewing online. We certainly care about the safety of all of you, and please note there are exits behind you, and behind me, and an AED is located right outside these doors. We are at 140 East Indiana, and again, we thank you for joining us for this board meeting this morning. At this time, we'll need a motion to adopt a proposed agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please, Mrs. Harrington.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. Okay, superintendent's report, Mr. Hostler.
Yes, good morning. I appreciate you coming to the board meeting here this morning, and I know that we've got just an update on your calendar schedule, and transition that's taking place to follow up from our last meeting, and Mr. Christie is here this morning, and together we'll kind of work through the presentation, answering questions that folks had as we made the presentation the last time, so we wanted to be close on a date. I know Ms. Laramer is actually working the elections this morning, so I know I talked to her yesterday, and I know she was very wanted to be here this morning, but also having poll workers is a pretty critical part of democracy and what we have to do, so she's there doing that this morning, and I wanted to mention, you know, she was certainly...
Turn on your mic.
Okay.
Turn on your mic.
Okay, all right. Sorry about that. So today we'll be going over a presentation with, going over with the board, a presentation updating the plans that we have for bringing the junior high back on November 10th as a follow-up to the last meeting. Mr. Christie, the principal of Perrysburg Junior High, is here, and together we'll go through some of the preparations and plans that have been made for us. As we do that, I just wanted to highlight that Ms. Laramer is actually working some polls today as a poll worker, and I know that I've talked to her several times leading up to this meeting, and I know she's very much plugged into what's taking place, and it feels badly she can't be here, but we all know that there's a shortage of poll workers this year, and so we appreciate her serving in that capacity. So with that, we'll get started with our presentation, and I'll pull up the slideshow that we have. And I think as we, I think as we begin this conversation, and just talking to parents, to staff members, to board members, I think we all want to recognize that on any given day, on any given hour, people feel differently about what to do, and you get that kind of pit in the stomach feeling when you start to think about the next steps and what we should do or what we shouldn't do. And I can tell you that that's kind of a normal feeling that we've all had really since March 17th, when schools were, you know, when we didn't have school anymore, when it was closed. How we try to function, how we try to plan during this time period is not an easy task, and there hasn't been a lot of guidance given to local school boards in terms of how to proceed. So out of the 610 school districts across Ohio, we know that there are 610 different approaches to what we're doing and how we're doing it. And I really think as we go through the presentation, I don't necessarily think there is a right answer or a wrong answer to the question, you know, what do we do? I think there is, that there are data points that are very important for us to consider, and we'll go over some of those. I think there are other types of things that we need to consider in terms of the social-emotional needs and academic needs of students, and I think we have to consider what's happening not only in the buildings, but also outside the buildings, because it won't be long before maybe that is what's happening inside the buildings. So the angst that folks feel as we talk about these, as we make plans for these, and in any given day, there's different feelings, and that's natural, that's normal, and I don't think we're alone in feeling that. And I know there's parents out there who are, who are watching, and, you know, they're also feeling that kind of knot in the stomach, who either want, you know, one extreme where we should be back five days a week with no masks, and we have the other extreme saying, you know, I don't feel comfortable bringing my child back in this environment, and everybody in between. So that is kind of the environment that we're trying to make the best decisions we can. So today, we're going to talk about just following up with that presentation from last time in terms of, you know, moving forward, here's what it would look like, this is what it would do, here's what's happening in the building since we last met, here's what's happening in the community since we last met, and, you know, we'll answer any questions that you have. So that's kind of the goal for today. And certainly, the task of making these decisions is not, not easy, and every day, every hour, there's feelings of, you know, is this the right path, or is there another right path? And that's not unusual for decision-makers in Ohio school districts. So with that, we'll get started. So just to back up the timeline, on Friday, October 30th, we sent out communication to families, kind of summarizing what happened at the previous board meeting, that we were planning to return to school four days a week beginning on November 10th. If we move forward with that, Monday, November 9th will not be a remote day of learning, so students on that day, teachers will not be uploading information that day. Instead, teachers will be preparing their classrooms and doing those extra kinds of things that need to happen, you know, to welcome all the students back in their classrooms. This is consistent with what we did at the beginning of the school year with the elementary teachers who were back. We kind of adjusted that schedule, if you recall, to allow them a little more time, you know, to make those final adjustments, to maximize that classroom space. On Monday, November 23rd, will be a remote day for the junior high students, and will not be attending in person, so that, again, that is a change from what we did, because before, with two days a week, we made that adjustment to try to balance out the two teams that were coming in on opposite days the week of Thanksgiving. But now, if the students are going to be back four days a week, we don't need to do that, because all of them will be back in equal amount of time, because they're all together. So that will be a change. So the only student day that week will be Tuesday, November 24th. So those are two highlights that we wanted to mention as we go through. There are some specific things that we wanted to talk about relative to the junior high that I know families and folks had about our plans. So we're going to go through some of those things now. What will be different at the junior high, what parents can expect, and students and staff can expect in terms of operations, and then we'll talk at the end of the presentation about an update with COVID, what's happening in our buildings, what's happening in our communities, and some metrics, and that was one of the things that came up at the last board meeting. What will we be looking at to make decisions to pull students into a less frequent face-to-face environment? What would have to happen in that space? What would we be looking at? So we'll talk about that as well. So transportation, we'll start with that. That's the issue that everybody begins with in the mornings. So there's a couple components to transportation. We have the buses that deliver students, and we also have families that transport students themselves. So very soon, parents and guardians may check the transportation portal where they can log in, and they will get the updated pickup and drop-off times. Right now, we're picking up 50% of the students at a time, because that's all the number of students that are back. With the changes, with picking up all the students in the morning, that will adjust their start time and, you know, when they're getting picked up in the morning. So parents just need to be aware of what changes may happen there. In August, we talked about two students to a seat on the buses. That's what we're doing right now, and that will be the same, and right now, we're projecting no more than 40 riders on the bus. That's exactly where we were in August when we talked about busing students. So with transportation, the only changes that we'll have on our ridership is the, when you'll be getting picked up and when you'll be dropped off, because the routes will change slightly to adjust, you know, the additional students that'll be on the route. So routes have been altered, and we're still in that area that we described back at the beginning of the year in terms of the number of riders we wanted on a bus, so I think that's important. With that, I'll ask Don to step up, and we'll kind of tag team on some of these things, but morning student drop-off, that's the other part of the equation in getting students to school, so turn it over to Don.
We know that in the morning, we're going to have quite a few cars coming through, and so we've taken a little bit of an HPI, and what we're doing is trying to do a staggered arrival for our parents as much as possible, understanding that they have limitations with time in the morning as well. We have two people out in the parking lot each morning helping to control the traffic flow and getting students out quickly, and so what we're going to do, what we can have is pluck the 14 cars come to the end of the line at a time, and we are, the big thing is kids being able to exit.
You might want to check to see if your mic is on, I'm sorry.
There we go.
All right, sorry.
The big thing is, as those cars pull in each morning, is the students being ready to exit quickly. And so what we do is we have Mr. Marquette at one end, kind of towards the football stadium, Dr. Wernemont at the other end, down towards the main entrance, and we wave the students out and get them to enter the building quickly. And so if that process works, you almost have 12 to 14 cars moving at one time, and that line then goes very quickly. So what we've done as well with, starting, 7:15, the students can enter the building. When they enter the building, the seventh graders will go into the auxiliary gym, eighth graders will go to the auditorium. In the past, to start the year, we had everybody go to the auditorium on the hybrid schedule, but again, we're trying to keep them separated as much as possible in there. So we have extra supervision in the auxiliary gym and in the auditorium. We have areas to keep the kids distance as much as possible, and then we would do a staggered release from there, starting at 7:30, where in the past, we would do that at 7:35. So we're giving more time for our students, knowing too that those cars are going to be coming through. Parents are great, coming through that drop-off line in the morning. You know, some of them, I think, are pushing their kids out the door, trying to get them, you know, wanting to get them moving. Sometimes they might have... Sometimes they might have to shake them a little bit to wake them up as they come through that line. But it is a, it's a thing that goes very well when everybody follows those procedures that we have in place.
The next area, Don, I know that people, a lot of planning had to take place, is food service and lunches. So I know that expanded cafeteria area to include utilizing the current cafeteria and also the auxiliary gym. So right now, in our junior high cafeteria, it's a pretty small space relative to the number of students that are served each lunch period. And in maximizing that student space, Don and his team looked at the auxiliary gym, which is in another area of the building to also set up for lunches. So we've also, will be recalling a number of cafeteria workers to help out with the additional students. On any one day, we'll have more students serving lunches, we'll need more cafeteria support to do that. You know, with more students buying lunches every day, that will help offset the cost of bringing those staff members back. So the details, Don, you know, and his team worked out, just to give you kind of a glimpse of what that will look like.
Right, so we have, we have three, our three lunches. And currently, on the hybrid schedule, our first two lunches have about 200 students in them. The last lunch is just over 100 students. So we wanted, our goal was to try to keep those numbers pretty consistent if we could. And so if you look at that fourth period lunch, we have two eighth grade teams, about 202 students and one seventh grade team of 95 students. And so what we will do with that lunch, we will take our seventh grade students, instead of eating in the cafeteria, they will now go down to the auxiliary gym. And what we did, we have 50 tables they're in, we have 150 chairs, knowing that we have more chairs than we need. Our goal is to have about two students per table, they're eight foot long tables, so they will be able to stay distance at those tables. They're very similar to the same tables that HPI is currently using as well. That process is reversed then in our second lunch. We have two seventh grade teams and one eighth grade team. So the eighth grade team will then go to the auxiliary gym and then eat their lunches down in the auxiliary gym. The last lunch, our eighth period lunch, is just a seventh grade team and an eighth grade team, so we're under that 200 mark. So we'll be able to keep all of those students in the cafeteria. What's nice is keeping them in the cafeteria, we'll still be able to keep four students per table, as we are right now on the hybrid schedule, with the plexiglass on each table in the cafeteria. We will not have plexiglass on the tables in the auxiliary gym, but the students will be able to be six feet apart, whereas on those round tables, they're about four feet apart with the plexiglass in between them. So that's, that's our plan. We also have one serving line currently in the cafeteria. We were cut in half with staff, knowing that we only got half of our students. And so trying to get more staff back, we'll be able to open both serving lines to be able to get students through those in a timely manner. The students that will be eating in the auxiliary gym, they will go through those lines first. So they have the time to walk down, have time to sit, eat, and not be rushed. So we have the extra supervision in the auxiliary gym and we have duty, you know, two people, that's just the monitors and then that doesn't include our administrative team and counselors who also go down and help with those, you know, those lunches as well.
Assigned seating, I know that was one question that families and kids had.
Yeah, all students will continue that, we have it in place now. We'll continue with the assigned seats, we have the seating charts. We know that coming back, those are gone. So we'll be starting basically over at the ground level as far as putting those charts and things together. Plus with the students in the auxiliary gym, they would, once they have that time to kind of find somebody who they want to sit with, then we'll have those seating charts together as well, just to be able to do that contact tracing too.
And I know you kind of touched upon this, Don, the walkers and car riders entering.
Yeah, what we do, the, you know, one thing I didn't talk about there was when students are released, whether they're coming in, you know, as a walker, a car rider, and I said they go to the separate areas until 7:30, when we release from there, they immediately go to their locker and then to their first period class. In the past, students were able to do the, the social walk is what I would call it around the building until that first tardy bell. Late bell would ring and then they had four minutes to get to their class. Now they go directly to that class and they don't have that opportunity, you know, to have that traffic out in those hallways. Then we still allow them to go eat breakfast, so students still have that ability to do that. Most kids, if we're releasing them at 7:30, they're going to have at least 10 to 15 minutes if they'd like to go down and eat as well.
And bus riders, released by buses individually, that's kind of a new, a new thing?
It's new, we've done it somewhat now with our hybrid, but now it'll be even more controlled. Mr. Bueker is on that side of the building in the morning where our buses drop off. He will go over to each individual bus and wave those students off of the bus. That way we don't have a high number of students coming in through the cafeteria each morning. We will also use another entrance to bring students in as well. So we've worked with our transportation director and that, we'll start that process five minutes earlier than we do now. So again, so when kids are coming in, they're not feeling like, oh, I'm rushed, I need to get to my locker and get right to my class, they still have that time without being rushed as well.
And taking us to the end of the day, everything kind of reversed almost.
It is, it's reversed. You know, we're, we dismiss our bus riders first and what, we have them going out separate entrances, the buses that are more towards what I call the old softball field and we have them go out the exit doors by the portables. The buses that are more towards the HAC, those students go out through the cafeteria. Right now, we just, with the number of students we have, we've been able to say, hey, bus riders, you are released and they do a great job and they go. With the number of students we're going to have now, we're going to dismiss by individual buses during that timeframe. And then the kid, we're going to have those bus number signs on those exit doors. Once the kids figure that, their bus number in that exit, which most of them already know anyway, but we're going to have some maybe new riders knowing as to where to exit. Again, it's just a controlled dismissal is what I would call it. Then after the bus riders go, then we will dismiss the car riders, walkers, and we do that by grade level, again, to control any kind of traffic and those big mobs going through the hallways.
And I know with custodians, you know, we have a pretty good pattern, a great crew at the junior high and I know there'll be some changes.
You know, our concern on the custodial side is that really the junior high would be back almost to a normal phase, including our after-school activities. We have both boys and girls basketball have started, they'll be starting games up soon. And we have many concerts now that are starting, we actually have an orchestra concert this Wednesday and Thursday. So as far as our things going on, we're back to that, almost a normal type of, you know, building operation. The only thing now too is we've added more by putting students eating in the auxiliary gym, which creates more need and more support custodial to clean up, set up tables. When you're talking 50 tables, 150 chairs, that's, that's a lot, so.
And at the transitions with the bell schedules, so.
Yep, it will be very similar to what we have in place, but we're changing, our teacher workday was 7:30 to 3:00. We're just adjusting that really by five minutes earlier in the morning and then five minutes earlier in the afternoon. So we wanted that because we're releasing students from the auxiliary gym and also from the auditorium earlier. So we want those teachers in their classrooms when those students are coming in. So we just made a small adjustment to that and, you know, I think it's important as those students are coming into the building, that their teachers are there waiting for them, greeting them, and then also monitoring our hallways as far as that traffic goes.
And I know that you've kind of adjusted the bell schedule, so seventh and eighth graders are coming and going at different times.
Right, our seventh graders get out of a class three minutes before the eighth grade. So typically, by the time the eighth grade is being released from their class, when that bell rings, the seventh graders are already in their class. And we have a different bell sound for them, so they're easily recognized. The only issue sometimes we may have is some of our elective teachers teach both grade levels, so you might have a seventh grade group going to an elective teacher who had eighth graders in their class. And what we've done is worked out a process where kids stand outside in the hallway, they even put dots out there, their distance, as they stand and wait for a couple of minutes for the eighth graders to be released. But 90% of our students are already in that classroom before the other ones are released. We now have yellow tape, it looks like telling kids it's not a passing lane through the middle of the hallways. We have yellow tape down and we, we put it in last week just to get the kids to start to understand that process of stay to the right. And, you know, they do a really good job with it and some have fun with it, they like to try to walk the line and, you know, as they go through the hallway. But anything we can do to get that traffic to be as seamless as possible and keep kids from, you know, bobbing and weaving through hallways and bumping into each other the best we can, that was one we found.
And I know there are specialty classes that you guys have really worked hard to provide our students that are tricky, I guess the best way to describe that.
Yeah, when you are thinking of a band class where you're expelling air through an instrument, it's one that, there just can't be a wiggle room as far as that space goes. You know, they've put a lot of things in place with bell covers over top, you know, the tops of their instruments. But Mr. Jordan has utilized as much space as potentially possible on the stage of the auditorium because that's his classroom. He's even to the point where he has removed himself from the stage and has set up a riser in front of the stage where he stands out away from the students off of the stage to be able to, again, take advantage of as much space on there as possible. So we're able to continue to do that, provide the spacing needed with the numbers that will be in there. Orchestra is a little different because it's not as much as a wind-blown, you know, type of an instrument within that classroom. They will be two to three feet of distancing with the number of students that will be in that classroom. They will also be using individual music stands. In the past, they would share materials, they would share music stands. We were able to purchase those through the COVID funds and be able to provide them with individual stands. So the big one was choir, you know, again, for obvious reasons. We are looking, what we've done is be able to adjust Mr. Hamilton's schedule, so he will be able to divide students in half. They will take about 12 to 13 students out to one of the portables and use that area. That way they will only have the other half of the students in the choir room, one of the days where they would be doing any kind of singing. There's other days where they will do other types of activities that are not involved in singing, they'll be able to have a bigger group together on those days. But we were able to be creative and Mr. Hamilton was very willing and flexible with his schedule as well.
Yeah, and I know Don and his team, working with those music teachers, they really are an impressive group because they take a lot of time to problem solve and they understand the challenges, they also value what the music program means to the students and to the staff. And I think they've really worked well to try to create the best opportunity to keep offering those, you know, those classes for those students. You know, that's real important.
I would also say they do an excellent job of communicating with other music teachers in the area as to what they're doing, also within their professional organizations of what's being recommended, to making sure that they're doing what the standards are set for their content. And I can't say enough about their flexibility and trying to work with us and do what's best in a tough situation for kids.
So now we'll kind of move into the classrooms and I think with all the classrooms, we've asked staff to maximize the space in each classroom. And the beginning, going back to July, going back to August, when we talked about classrooms and setup, the CDC and other organizations said, you know, we want to strive for six feet of social distancing when possible. The American Academy of Pediatrics, they were another organization that we cited, they talked about the need to maximize social distancing, you know, students wearing masks and strive to get that maximum. And there was some confusion at the beginning of the year saying that there's a requirement that every seat is six feet. And we talked at length about how that wasn't the case, that we were trying to maximize the space between students and have the students remain in mask, which will continue, and to look at the classroom, push desks aside, rearrange configurations, limit the amount of time with students. We know the, when you're doing contact tracing, that 15-minute threshold is one of the triggers that will cause someone to go into quarantine. So we know these things and I think we've gotten much better as the school year has gotten through, as we've gotten through the first 11 weeks of school to do that. At the beginning of the year, our biggest concern was HPI. And, you know, we had less space between students at HPI and we talked about that, you know, two to three feet social distancing in some cases. Through some of the day at the elementaries, we're also, where there is less contact or less space between students, sometimes one to three feet, you know, given the course of the day. And that's that kind of pod concept that we talked about back in August. The downside to that is when we have a student who tests positive, the number of students that have to quarantine, it's a much larger swath. And at the high school and junior high right now, when a student tests positive, the number of students that have to quarantine is actually less than at the elementaries because of that. So as we go over the numbers, we do know that there is some important information as we kind of frame this. One, we have a building where there is, there has been less, you know, social distancing than others, and that's HPI. We do know that we've had 11 weeks of living with that experience and the concerns that we had at the beginning of the year. And we also know that as of today, there has not been a confirmed positive COVID case that has resulted from a class, student-to-student transmission in class. So what that means is even in the HPI and the elementaries where students are back four days a week with their classmates in a smaller area with less social distancing, we have yet to see that student-to-student transmission. And I think that's really important and we'll talk about that at the end because if we begin to see that, that is one of the triggers that we would have to address in terms of taking a step backwards. So as we go through the class sizes, you know, I asked Don, I said, you know, put the classrooms together, spread them out the most that you can, and then let's measure and what is, what does it look like in that classroom? So Don provided and on the screen here, you can see, you know, that basically the class sizes, I think, are fairly good. In the seventh grade core and eighth grade core, we're averaging 18 and 20 students per section. So that's, that's lower than what we've normally had. Part of that is the scheduling, creative and balanced scheduling that Don and his team has done. Some of it is the number of students who left for the PVA, who are going online. So that's helped us with smaller numbers than the normal. In those classes, we are looking about one to two feet in certain circumstances where students are apart. And then with your, with STEM, foreign language, health, PE, orchestra, you can see that there's variations. And then orchestra, band, choir, a little bit more because of, they just have more space and dividing up the classes as Don described. So, you know, those are some, you know, that's an area of concern for us. It's an area that we're sharing with the board that, you know, that students will be closer together in classrooms than they are now. And they will be very similar to what we've had at HPI and also the elementaries. And so I think it's important to keep that in mind. It's not something that we're trying to not talk about, it's here, we're sharing it. We want to be upfront with, you know, what we're doing, so, you know, people understand that. It is something that we've shared with the health department in terms of, you know, our plans and what we're doing. And, you know, we'll talk a little bit about what we're experiencing, but the junior high also has completed their first fall sports season where students are doing a whole variety of fall sports, where they're, you know, in groups and competing and practicing and transporting to events, competing against students from other schools, you know, very close proximity. And we've watched that very closely and I would say that this fall sports season has been a success. There's been very, a very limited amount of spread with athletics in those activities. So all of these factors had led us to taking a look at... So all of these factors had led us to taking a look at this next step. But you can see that, you know, we're part of, moving to this phase of the hybrid is reducing, you know, putting more students in class face-to-face instruction means there's less space between students. Don, I don't know if there's anything.
Yep, just what Tom is saying is we can put many, many safety procedures in place. And we've tried to accomplish that. But the bottom line is there's only so much space in a classroom. And there's so many seats and bringing all the students in, these are the classroom sizes that we're going to look at. We will have an Algebra I class with twenty-eight students. I will have a health class with thirty-two students. That'll be, you know, one to two feet apart within those classrooms. That's, that will be that reality. Don't want to try to make you think that anything different than that. I think, you know, it's like Thomas said, looking at the numbers and looking at the data, it comes down to, you know, what you are comfortable with, you know, as a board and trying to take that information and take from there. We have a lot of other classes that might be twenty, twenty-one, depending on the period within the day. We've tried to adjust those numbers as much as we can without impacting a student's schedule and completely overhauling it. And anytime you pull from one, it's like robbing Peter to pay Paul. That other class numbers are going to go up just because you just have that number of students. What we don't know is the number of students that are going to come back second semester from PVA. That would definitely impact some of our other class numbers. Some that typically would have been around twenty might go up to twenty-three or twenty-four within those classrooms. So what we have tried to do is control as much as we can, but that is one area. You know, we're trying to put in, our teachers, a lot of them already have procedures in place where kids put hand sanitizer on their hands when they come in. They know it's part of the routine. We're not saying anymore to encourage. It's going to be required. Students are going to have to put hand sanitizer, you know, on their hands, you know, between each period. We will have more, we know we'll have more desks to clean. So are we putting procedures in place between classes for those desks to be cleaned between classes? So we're doing a lot of those things, but we, these are the numbers that we would be looking at in our classrooms.
So I know our goal in August, we keep coming back to that when we began. And as we've looked at, you know, coming back to school in August, there was, there was a great deal of uncertainty. We didn't know really what to expect. We didn't know if there would be student-to-student spread. We didn't know how things would work when somebody was positive. Would we be able to staff our buildings? You know, would we have enough bus drivers? These were all the things that were giving us that, as I began, that kind of pit-in-the-stomach feeling as we kicked off the school year. And here we are, eleven, twelve weeks later, and I think there's been a lot of successes. There's a lot of things that we've learned, a lot of things that we are doing better. And there's things that we're continuing to learn and to evolve. And we talked about having to be flexible, and I think, I think we've been flexible. But I also think that we have respected, you know, not being in a place where we're changing our schedule rapidly and parents are having to adjust every single week with changes. We've been able to kind of keep that framework, that consistency, that continuity while keeping students, you know, safe. And I know that the internal building data is something that we have now that we didn't have in August. And we'll spend a little more time talking about that. We keep talking about HPI, and Mr. Christie said, you know, we talked to the principal at HPI. We learned this from HPI. They were that first setting where students had closer proximity. They were that first setting that had two full grade levels back in the building. That's all that we're asking to do with the junior high is to do what's been happening a few miles away at HPI. But we, there's some differences. We highlighted those similarities of having two full grade levels in the same building. Bigger kids at HPI than the elementary means less social distancing in the classroom. Well, the junior high kids are a little bigger than the HPI students. So there's less social distancing, and we've talked about that. HPI has students in cohorts, whereas the junior high does not have that as much. And the high school doesn't have it at all. And that's one of the things that we're planning with the high school and why we're asking for more time for planning with the high school is, as Mr. Christie explained, seventh grade bell rings, then the eighth grade bell rings. The junior high, or the high school, you've got juniors and seniors and freshmen, sophomores, all in the same classrooms. It's not that easy to have kids on staggered bells because they're all integrated. So there's some things that we need to continue to explore there. But the junior high has also had an extensive sports program that's been up and running, and HPI hasn't. And we've had to deal with that in the building, which, you know, has been a challenge. This is our chart for staff and students who've been COVID-positive over the eleven weeks of the school year. And in the blue is the students that have been positive for COVID. And you can see the trend line going into week eleven has been down. Red is the staff number of positives. And you can see where it's been down, and it's starting just to tick up. But it's ticking up because we've had several weeks of zero cases, and now we've had two weeks of one case. All of these cases, the confirmed positives, have been occurring outside of school. So this isn't school to school. This is students coming in after travel hockey or, you know, a barbecue at Uncle Joe's or whatever they're up to. These are the events that are causing this. But I think it's important to look at what has been happening in our district. And we know what's happening outside our district, and that's important, and we have to factor those things. But we're talking about last week, one student, one teacher positive for COVID. The week before, we had three students positive, one teacher. Week nine, we had three students positive, one teacher. We're talking about fifty-five, fifty-six hundred students that are in school. And we're talking about a staff of over five hundred. So just to keep the perspective. We shared this the last time with the timeline of how we've talked to different folks about our plan, what's been happening in our district. The last communication with Wood County, talking about this plan, was November first, yes. Ben Robison, Sunday evening phone call. And that's great to have that kind of support, that kind of connection with our health officials talking about, you know, what we're doing and what we need to do. We've had this timeline in terms of, you know, October nineteenth, talking about the next steps. We've had discussions with staff. We're following up with the board this morning. Barring any changes, we're beginning to move down the track of bringing in students on November tenth. We're going to continue to evaluate and plan on the second semester, bringing students back for face-to-face. So that is, you know, the timelines that we have. And again, it goes back to what we said. We have to be flexible. We have to be aware of what's happening in our buildings and in our community. And so everything can change in a matter of weeks. So we understand that this data, what we're doing on October nineteenth, what we're doing today, is always a new discussion. And we get that. And so the areas of concern, and Don, I think, did a good job of covering these when we talked about the last time we were together and the feedback that we've gotten since from staff, from parents. You know, everything from restrooms, and Mr. Christie outlined what those were, band and choir, PE, cleaning desks between classes, dismissal, all those things. So I think we've covered a lot of ground in terms of the operations. And Don and Chad and Scott have done a great job with the staff working those things out. There's going to be things that are going to pop up that we'll have to adjust to. And the reason we know that is because that's been the kind of year that we've had. There's always things that we didn't anticipate that we have to adjust to, and that will happen. But I know that we've done a great job with that. The other thing I wanted to mention is we're working on a partnership with Mercy Health. This is something that Mercy is one of our partners. They have stepped forward and said, you know, we've had success with Oregon schools. And the folks at Oregon, the administration has done a nice job of this. We have a number of students now that we're in cold and flu season, and staff for that matter, who are exhibiting COVID-like symptoms, and they have to be sent home until they get cleared. And we don't know, you know, what that is. There's allergies going around. There is flu viruses. There's strep throat. And they present very similar to COVID. And what Mercy is proposing to do is we will offer those families, when a student does get sent home, the ability to have a mobile Mercy team go to their home, do a test, and within twenty-four to forty-eight hours, get the results of that test to get that student back into school or staff member. So we're working on those details now, but we're excited about being able to offer that as another level of what can we do differently? What can we do better to make it, to make school work? And I think this could be something that could really help us out. So we wanted to go over some COVID updates in terms of what's happened since the last time we were together. So one of the things that we've been able to do, and we've got an excellent team that is working with the health department that is doing a lot of tracing. And one of the things that we began to do in the middle of, maybe after a few weeks back, we started to ask the question, where are people getting COVID? Because a lot of families know when they call in and say, you know, my child tested positive, or they're getting tested. So during that conversation, we're very grateful for parents who share this information because what we're seeing here and what we've been documenting is where are folks getting, you know, exposed to this? And I think it's important that, obviously, there's, unknown is the largest area where they just don't know where they got it from. Or this still covers data where we didn't ask the question at the beginning of this tracking, tracing. But as we start to get this filled out more with each case, we see that, you know, family members is the greatest area where students are getting COVID. Mom or dad are positive for COVID. The child is positive for COVID. By far, that's, you know, one of the biggest areas that we've known. Out-of-school contacts is another eight percent. So twenty-six percent are family members. Another eight percent is out-of-school contacts. So that could be somebody they work with, somebody that they're interacting with, an extended family member. Travel, non-school-sponsored athletics. So we've seen this is six percent. Just recently, we've had more cases of this. And this is a little concerning because these are students that are playing not school-sponsored sports, but travel leagues, whether it be hockey or AAU or other types. So I think that's something that we really have to work with parents and those coaches. Junior Jackets just began their program here. Those coaches are meeting with our staff, talking about safeguards. We want to make sure that they're doing all the things that our sports teams have done to try to be as successful as possible. But there are some organizations that we don't have contact that are out of our hands, and we've seen some positives from there. Athletics, you know, at the beginning of the year, that's where we saw more positive cases. And that continues to be an area of, there's just, you know, kids tackling each other. There's just more chance of spread that way, kids guarding each other, doing those kinds of things. So that is an area that we really have to work hard and try to keep that down. And like I said, there has not been a confirmed case. We've had three students that have exhibited symptoms, who've not tested positive. We're keeping track of those from, you know, within the classroom. But we haven't had that student who's tested positive because the student they're sitting next to has been positive. And that's important. I shared this with you. This is the COVID, the positive rates, the confirmed. And you can see what it's looking like for our district going into this decision. And I think that's one point that's important because families watch the news and they hear about the spread, and it's real. They hear the governor talk in very explicit terms about what we need to do, that things are increasing across the state. That's true. But we also have our internal data, which is true. And this is what it looks like for us. And so we have to keep in mind and keep that balance between both. The number of quarantines, you can see here, this is what it's looked like for eleven weeks. This is a disruptor for learning. And you can see that, you know, we've had big weeks where there's just been a lot of kids quarantined with a few positives. And that's something that, you know, will continue to happen. At the junior high, a student who's testing positive, probably affecting less than ten students, that number will increase. So when that student at the junior high tests positive, there'll be more students that'll be quarantined. That will happen. So that's important to keep in mind. So the junior high to date, this is data from the junior high of what it's looked like. Obviously, the red is the quarantine numbers. One week, week seven, we had forty-seven students who were quarantined. That week, we had one positive. It's not all, there's many students who are quarantined not because of a student but because their mom has it, or their dad has it, or their brother has it, and they have to stay home. So some of these quarantines have nothing to do with school or a student in school, and that's important to keep in mind, too. Students who are quarantined are sometimes because of an exposure at home, unrelated. So that's our data. That's what's been happening at the junior high. And then here's more of a breakdown of what it looks like. So the junior high, the students who are positive to this point has been four in eleven weeks. For staff, that number is two. And that's where we are, you know, for eleven weeks. HPI is the building again. That, we're not taking a leap for the junior high to be more like HPI. It's a step. There are some differences, and I think we've talked about some of those differences. But in those differences, HPI, the building that we admitted in August that we were most worried about, that we were most concerned about, what's happened in that building, you can see the data here. The quarantines, you know, have been relatively low with the exception of week seven, where we saw forty. But again, you know, drilling down, looking at the data, we've had three students at HPI test positive for COVID. We've had zero staff members to date that have tested positive. And the quarantines, there's been fifty-six students so far this year who've been quarantined. And again, closer quarters, there's just been fewer cases of COVID there. And that's where we are. But taking a step back, what's happening around the state, and this is the most updated map, is more COVID. That is happening. It is, it is real. It is, it is spreading, and it's spreading in our community. These are some of the governor's key indicators that he shared. And you can see that everything is trending in the wrong direction, and that's worrisome to us. That contributes to that kind of pit-in-the-stomach feeling you get. Because you look at our data, what's happening in our buildings, and then you look at what's happening in the state, and it's really two different things happening. And what we know is what's happening in the community will ultimately show up in our buildings. To what level and to how, we don't always know. So drilling down, which is part of our discussion, is what's happening in our ZIP code. So on October twenty-eighth, that was the last available. Perrysburg and Wood County had fifty-six to sixty active cases. That ZIP code was the, had more than any other ZIP code in Wood County. So people watching, people hearing this, well, what does that mean exactly? So, so, so let's take a look. On August fifth, Perrysburg had fifty-six to sixties, which is exactly where we were today. So there's been changes since then. We actually went down, in the next slide, you can see this, September thirtieth, Perrysburg had sixteen to twenty active cases. So just to kind of go through, on August fifth, we had more than Bowling Green. We had the highest in the county with fifty-six to sixty. On September thirtieth, several weeks later, Bowling Green had a hundred and twenty-one to a hundred and twenty-five cases. We were at sixteen and twenty. But today, this is, this is where we are. We're at fifty-six to sixty. So I wanted to give that perspective. And as we look at planning for the future, we look at the next step, we consider all of these factors are all important to us. So we have the ability, and this is what I want to share, we have the ability to go down. We've done it before. And that means people outside of school are wearing masks. They're being careful. And we know from looking at Bowling Green, the numbers can go way up, too, if people aren't doing those things. But what we do know is what's happening in school is working. Schools are arguably one of the best places for kids to be to not catch COVID. How do we say that? Because that's what the data shows us. Where are kids catching COVID? They're catching it outside of school. They're catching it at family functions. They're catching it, you know, in the community, not in school. And I think that's important to keep in mind as we talk about that. And I know parents are nervous. And I know parents are, are nervous, saying, you're putting my kids in these environments. And that's why we're going over this data this morning. Well, what's happening in that environment? And I think that's important for us, too. So one of the questions that came up at the last board meeting, um, was, well, what are we going to look at to take a step backwards? Because I think we've demonstrated that we're willing to take, we're willing to look at the data and, and see where it will take us. And if it is supporting the discussion about having more students come back, then, then let's have that discussion. If it is supporting, we need to pull back, then I, I have no problem bringing that discussion forward, too. So I think that one of the things that we've talked about is what would it take for the district to revert back in this hybrid mode to going back to, you know, um, less face-to-face instruction? And again, we're not aware of any of that student-to-student or teacher-to-student or teacher to, or student-to-teacher spread. But if we begin to see that happening, you know, at the junior high or the other buildings, that is the first and biggest red flag for us. So if we begin to see cases pop, and we've seen the ups, we've had, week seven was a bad week for us. We had more quarantines, more positive than other weeks. We're going to have that in the next, you know, month. Well, we'll have a bad week and we'll have a week that's better. We've, we've kind of experienced that. But if we begin to see that, that continual uptick, that continual surge of positives, then we have to have a conversation. And most importantly, if we begin to see it spread from student to student in the classrooms, that is where the health department is going to be very concerned. They said that is one of the first areas that they would look at and say, we have a problem. So those weekly conversations that we're having with the health department, that's the kind of first red flag that they're looking at. But here are some other factors that we wanted to look at, and these are all decision points that we want to measure. Not, not one of these alone would trigger us to, to kicking into another category. And I, and I think that's important for families to know because I think one of the most disruptive things for parents and families is, and, and these staff members, is, you know, hey, next week, it looks like our numbers are going to go up by one more student than our threshold, and we're going to be changing. And then two weeks later, our threshold number goes down by one student, we're going to change. We don't want to do that. There's a lot of factors that go into this. So we tried to capture, these are the consideration, the metrics that we would want to consider as we s- study what's going on in our community and in our schools. So the one is cases per 100,000 in the 43551 zip code. You know, we have the county number, that's something that is shared with the, the county and, and where we are as a county, the number of new cases. The governor puts that chart with all the 88, um, you know, the 88 counties at the beginning of every press conference. The county is going to start preparing that number for us, specifically in, in the 43551. So with that, using the, the metrics here, you know, if, if we're between 51 and 225, you know, we're going to be in that hybrid mode, or consider staying in the hybrid mode because spread is happening. When you start going over 200 to 26, that's a rate that would get the attention of the health department for our area. And this isn't Bowling Green State University. This is ours, this is our community, 43551. So I think that's important. There's, they're, based on the CDC back-to-school guidelines and evaluating what you can do and when you should do it, they had five, uh, mitigation strategies that need to be implemented, implemented. The consistent use of masks, social distancing to the largest extent possible, hand hygiene, cleaning and disinfecting, and contact tracing. So how are we approaching these five strategies in, in each building? I, I have to tell you that the masks, that students have done great with the masks. The masks work. How do we know? Because we're not seeing spread in the school buildings. So when the students are in school, they're, they're practicing all of these five strategies, and it, it is working. So that's, that's important, um, to keep that in mind. With, you know, the, the contact tracing that we're doing, um, working with Wood County, having our staff involved in that process, the graphs and data that I shared with you, we're able to generate that instantly, which is important for us to be able to make decisions quickly. We're not relying on the health department taking 10 days to get ahold of a family to, to, to let us know what their status is. We've really have it refined to giving us this data right away. The other thing that, that we're going to run into, and, and part of it is just the cold and flu season, we have absenteeism go up. You know, we're, we're in a, uh, setting where, where in a normal year, we have germs that are being passed all the time and, and staff getting sick and a bug going through a building. That is going to continue to happen in addition to COVID. But one of the things that we have to be, uh, aware of is that the buildings are, are, it's going to be harder to, to keep the buildings up and running if we have staff that are out sick, under quarantine, or being isolated. And, and we might run into a situation where we can't physically operate the building. So all these other metrics could be happening well, but if we have a case where we have enough staff out and we don't have enough people to cover, then, then schools may be closed for some time. So that is, that is a reality. And knock on wood, we haven't had that. But have we had days where we haven't had subs? Every week. But we've been able to work it. But there may be a time where we can't. And, and we'll, we'll, you know, obviously we'll have to deal with that. The county Ohio Public Health Advisory System, county level alert. You know, I think this is one of the things that we've lived with this back in August. It was just coming online. What does it mean? We have not seen a school district, uh, or a, a county, I'm sorry, that has gone into the purple. There's been threats. There's been double secret probation, red. But we haven't seen anybody move into that category yet. So, you know, this is something that I think we want to continue to pay attention to. I don't think it necessarily results in us automatically changing, um, you know, weekly, monthly. I think it's one of the factors that we consider, but not exclusive. So we're going to continue to refine this, um, share it with the health department. We discussed this Sunday night. And, and again, it's one of those things, as more data comes available to us, as testing comes online and we get more granular with our testing in this area, that might be a, additional data point. So we're not, we're not sitting and making these decisions, you know, in a vacuum. We're trying to be thoughtful about how we're proceeding. Everybody that is, that is on the board has children. Some have grandchildren. Some have students or grands- grandchildren that are students. Some have teachers that are, you know, uh, children that are teachers. Everyone is vested in, in trying to do what's best. And, you know, balancing that, getting kids back face-to-face, which is important, and everybody agrees, but also keeping them safe. And, and I think that's important as well. So, um, you know, that, that hasn't changed. And, and we're not saying, we're not taking this, uh, I know folks have said, well, you're bringing more kids back. You're not really paying attention. I think tonight, today, we've, we've shown that. We, we are paying attention. We're actually very thoughtful about what we're trying to do. And, and I know there are some that feel this is terrible. And I know some feel that this is terrible for an entirely different reason, and that's just where we are today with this virus. Is no matter what we do, whichever path we take, there's going to be people unhappy. So what does the data say that we should do? What is the data say that is the best for our students? And, and, you know, keeping a careful eye on the horizon. And, and that's what led us to here. But we certainly respect the board saying, based on what you're saying, what on your presenting, based on what I'm feeling and what I'm experiencing, this is, this is what I think we should do. And that's, that's why the board is here. So I certainly, we certainly respect any decision the board would make. But our job is to just to pre- prepare as much information, give you the best data, recommendations based on that data, and, and, you know, together we'll, we'll get through, you know, the next weeks, the next days, the next months, hopefully the next year. We'll just open up to any questions that, that, that you may have.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Hostler. A very good presentation on, uh, showing the pros and cons and the data. Mr. Christie, as per Mrs. Downs' comments the last meeting, your staff, your administration did a wonderful job of a game plan to keep our students safe. And I could tell even in the enthusiasm of your presentation that you guys have been working hard to put something together in the event that our kids or students will be back in school. At this time, we'll open up for questions, the board, to Mr. Hostler, Mr. Christie.
Uh, I guess I'll start. As a, um, parent with a student at the junior high, couldn't it be more ecstatic that she will be going back four days a week? I do want to point out one thing, Tom. On one of the graphs you showed that, um, where it showed the cases that we had in the, in the area for the 43551, I think it's really important, and they do show this on the Ohio website, where those cases are coming from. And most of them do come from nursing homes. When you see the 50 to 60 cases, those are nursing homes, and you can find that information. Because at a nursing home, obviously those people are elderly and the most vulnerable. And we do know that that is who, um, unfortunately gets the disease and, um, unfortunately can pass away. So when you look at that data, you have to look at where it is in the area. And it's not to say, because if you would look at your data, if you say that in an area where they have the high cases, it's going to then transfer to the schools, that is totally incorrect. That is not what nationwide data shows. So just because it could be prevalent in the area, it does not mean therefore it will be in the schools. That is totally incorrect.
Can I, which graph were you looking at? Cause I'm, I'm confused.
Um, he showed two graphs that show there, like those, where you can see where it says 50 to 60 active cases. But what he's not showing, and you can find it on the Wood County Health Department, it shows where those cases come from. It goes through each nursing home and it will show, like at Kingston, there'll be, you know, 14 cases, and then it'll show how many staff actually have it as well. So I think that's important to know, where in the area in the 43551, where it is. Because a lot of the time, it is at nursing homes. And you can look at the data on each county in Ohio, and if we had a prison, there's a lot of cases in prisons, too. So fortunately, we don't have that in Perrysburg, but we do have a lot of nursing homes in Perrysburg.
Can I ask you then, so October 28th, which was just a couple of days ago, the 50 to 60 cases, you're saying that that came from nursing homes?
Yeah, you can look it up in the Wood County Health Department. Yeah.
I did talk to several nursing homes most recently for other reasons, not for me, but, they told me Kingston was one of them. They had no cases. So that's why it's important for me to hear.
Yeah, go to the Wood County Health Department. It breaks it down.
I'd like to point out that it's 50 per 100,000. It's not 56 cases in Perrysburg. It's 56 to 60 cases per 100,000. The city of Perrysburg has approximately 23,000 people, which would mean that per 20,000, there would be 10 cases. So it's, it's per case, but I think that I'm most impressed with the district on keeping such accurate numbers for where we are and basing our decisions on what's happening in our schools. I think we're very clear. Every graph shows where we are in our schools. Number of cases in our schools, where the children are, are coming down with it. I think we really have extensive data, and I think that is the basis for our decision. And I do not think anybody's making it on 60 cases in Perrysburg. I think we're making all decisions on what's happening in our schools. And I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud of the, the tracing we do. The, uh, how upfront we are with the community, with, you know, which schools have had a case, which schools have the most quarantines. I, I, I think we've just done an outstanding job of studying the problem and coming up with a solution that's good for our schools based on our data.
I couldn't agree more, but I just wanted to point that out because that is a factor. When you look at where it is in the area, I think that is eye-opening when you break down and look at the data, you know, microscopically where it is. That's all I wanted to point out because I know there's more information than just that slide. When you go to the Wood County Health Department, it breaks it down.
It might be good, maybe the next board meeting, to have somebody from the Wood County Health Department come and kind of walk us through the data so that we, we all have an understanding of where cases are coming from, what the numbers mean. Because that's one of the things that's a challenge for folks is to, which, which slide, which data, what, what, you know, the county data that the, that the governor puts up is per 100,000. When, you know, how does this slide here differ from that? How is it the same? You know, what is happening with community spread? You know, what, what are the age groups of the folks that are getting it? Because that is trending, you know, a, a younger category. Younger people are getting it. We're seeing more parents reporting, I mean, just in our anecdotal data. More parents are, are getting it than we had in the summer. So it's, it's prevalent, it's, it's moving. And it might be good for us to have someone from the health department just come and walk through the data. And, and that's their, their data. That might be helpful for us. I'm, I'm probably not the best person to, to dig into that. But that's what they do. So.
And when it comes to the data for me, yeah, one, it is, and I agree, congra- I mean, such, such great effort so far in keeping this, this spread low, you know, zero, one positive cases, quarantine cases. I mean, what a great, what a great testament to the ability to, to control what is going on in our buildings right now. But when we look at the data, you know, the, the one thing that gets me is the predictive value of what we're seeing because we're certainly looking at the past. We've certainly got a, you know, at least one new variable. We're kind of introducing two new variables into this data. Particularly at the junior high. One is, you know, we are seeing some level unarguably of increased community spread in Wood County. And it's kind of recent. We came out of the, we came out of the last board meeting, and I believe it was that night, all of the talk that we had in, in here, suddenly there was a new thought that, wait a minute, we're upticking, we're upticking. And we see that, you know, look at the numbers over the weekend. So there's a little bit of the, how do we, what is the predictive, what is our ability to predict where this data will go? The other variable, of course, being putting more, more, more kids more in, into the schools and, and reducing the social distancing. So there is a question coming here. I'm a, like I said, I'm a CPA. I'm not an epidemiologist or even a statistician, so I'm not real good to talk about this stuff either. But in your conversations, you know, most recently with, with Mr. Robeson, can you dive in a little bit more to his reaction to the plan? Cause that's where I go a lot of times on this stuff is what are the experts saying? So what is our, you know, the closest we have to our experts saying about this plan? The spread that's going on in the community and how those two relate to each other?
You know, I think as a public health official, I don't want to, I don't want to, um, speak for him. So, you know, I, I think in general, as a, as a public health official, the, whatever is going to say, keep the safest, uh, the, you know, be safest for the greatest number of people is their first default. So staying home in your basement is the best way to handle the spread. So given that that's not really an option, what is the risk factor? And that's kind of how he and I spoke, that, that we are increasing the risk factor because we're introducing, to your point, that variable into that building. But how big of a risk is it? Is it an unknown risk? Is it something that's based on what we're experiencing? And that's where those data points. So that's how our conversation began is, you know, that, that, you know, staying in the basement is the safest thing. There's no risk in getting it if everybody is alone in their basement. So coming out of the house, you're going to have more risk going into the street, you're, you know, so at what level? And then what are you basing that decision on? So when we kind of went through those kind of talking points, I think his thing, where, where he left me was, Tom, if you're seeing that student-to-student spread in the building, that is going to raise a huge red flag in, in our department. That is a concern because you're not seeing that now. So that variable is resulting in that, that spread there. And then I think just the long term, if we come back in two weeks, four weeks, and we start to see more disruption, more upticks, then we, you know, then we have that discussion about, well, what are then we, you know, then we have that discussion about, well, what are all these data points saying? And how is that affecting what we're doing in a building? So I think that's where he was, and, you know, perhaps the next meeting, we can have he or someone from, have him or someone from his office come and, you know, talk about the data, walk through what it means, and ask him those questions directly. But supportive, but I would say very guarded and concerned about, you know, shutting down in the event that there is more spread. And he's very concerned about what's happening around the community. He's seeing upticks of community spread. And, you know, that's a concern for their department right now.
So that's a fair point. My takeaway from that, then, though, is we've got the tools, we've got the practices in place to identify that uptick, interact to it quickly.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, that answers my question.
I don't only have a question, other than comments for the board, as we have a discussion. And again, I've been on both sides of high bread versus going back four days as early as five minutes ago, listening to Mr. Hostler's presentation. But I did write some things down so that I could have a focus on what I wanted to say. And, you know, the studies show that student-to-student, not bringing the COVID, student-to-teacher, we got the data. But the data we have, I was thinking, it's data based upon information from the fall when we're outdoors. It's the data, I looked at Week 7, as Tom presented, for junior high and HPI was high. I don't know why it spiked at that particular point. Or August, the second week in August, there were six students infected and four staff. And that was with the data where the county said we had 50 to 60 cases, active cases per 100,000. So again, looking at that, we do not have data on what's going to take place next, which is indoor activity. And what concerns me most, when I looked at the calendar again last night, I looked at the Thanksgiving break and the Christmas breaks entering into the picture, two other variables. Because as I hear the governor speak this week, as I listen to and read and articles, it's, again, like Mr. Hostler said, it's not necessarily the student-to-student, but it's occurring in families, family gatherings. Where families are getting together, letting their guard down, not wearing the mask in the home, which I probably did the same thing this past weekend with my family down in Columbus. And that's spreading family to family. So we have the holidays coming up, and I don't know what, we can't control families and what they do. When we control the school environment, we have a safe environment, because we're wearing the mask, it's mandatory. We're washing our hands, we're socially distanced the best we can. But we can't control outside of the four walls of our school buildings. I hear all that, and I put all these things together, and the question is asked, if not now, when? If not now, when? And so I look at the calendar again, I'm thinking, well, let's pick a date. And I'm wondering, and just throwing this out for board discussion, and I'm wondering if, what if we hit the pause button for a moment to collect some more data in the next five weeks? Because if you look at the calendar, and if I added it upright, if this begins November 10th, as is being proposed to the board, November 10th, you've got two weeks before Thanksgiving break. December 1st, you've got three weeks before Christmas break. So that's looking at 20 days where they're in person, face-to-face, and that's five weeks, you know, of education. If we gather more data at that time, where we're indoors, our extracurricular activities are indoors, we see what happens with our county, we see what happens in our zip code, 43551. And then maybe we are at a situation where we can make a better, myself, a better decision based upon the other variables. That is, we know that maybe there's not going to be an increase in the next 10 weeks, because even though we're indoors, people are following the rules. I don't know, I just throw those things out for more discussion. That's where I'm at right now. Maybe we need to hit the pause button to gather more data on indoor activities and families gathering over the holidays, and seeing how we come out of that. And maybe we start December 1, maybe we start January 9th, and go in person four days, and when there's no more interruptions with respect to holidays, other than weekends. I just throw that out for your discussion as a board. By the way, I wish we could stack the board today. You know, I'm just teasing, of course, but, you know, we have to make the decision.
Again, appreciate the way you're thinking. However, again, as a parent with a student in the district at the junior high, again, I couldn't be more excited for her to go back four days a week. I think we have the data we need. I think if you look at nationally, if you look at internationally, like as we know, Britain's closing down, but they kept their schools open. It is so important that the kids are in school. They're not going to get COVID from in-school, that's what the data shows. They're going to get it when they leave, and, you know, at 3 o'clock. Unfortunately, we cannot control that. What we can control, and what is working, is what we're doing right now in school. Mask, washing hands, social distancing when we can. We know that's working. We've got to get these kids back in school, academically, socially, emotionally. Food, they need, you know, these kids need to get a meal. I mean, you can look at so much data, that the benefit outweighs the risk. And anytime I get an email from anyone concerned, I'm concerned, too. I don't want COVID, I don't want my daughter to get a COVID. But I look at the risk-reward, and I know being in school is where she needs to be. Confidently, I can say that 100%. I'd be voting today on the high school returning. That's how much I believe these kids need to be back in school, today. Not five weeks now, not more data, I think that's a waste of time. They need to be in school.
Well, I appreciate that, I understand it, and I feel the same way, too, sometimes. My question would be back in August, July, when we were meeting, at that time, you had an occupation that kept you away from our board meetings, you did not want to get together with us together for safety reasons. Would you, and you're here now, so you're not as fearful about with your daughter going to school at this time, if we increase the risk? That's what I'm hearing you saying, because of the educational part outweighs the risk factor for contacting the virus.
Correct, and let me be clear, I've never been fearful of meeting or getting together because of COVID. I don't live that way, I live my life, of course, do not want to get it, and I take the precautions necessary. Now, of course, at the time, I was working for somebody who unfortunately passed away this summer, 90 years old. So in the back of my mind, I kept that in, you know, what I was practicing daily. So out of respect for that, yes, I did distance and, you know, make, it was provided that we could have virtual meetings, so I was in attendance just virtually.
And that's the point I'm trying to make, Mrs. Eubank, is that when our staff and students go home for the holidays, if I didn't see this pink and this green marks here, if we could cancel spring, uh, winter break and Thanksgiving break, I wouldn't be as thoughtful about what I'm saying now, too, because that child can take the virus home, doesn't have any symptoms themselves, takes it home, and they get together with grandparents. Because the holidays, I do believe some folks will still get together, I think families will gather. And so the same reasons you just mentioned about the person you're working for, I'm just throwing it out there for discussion.
Well, that was when we didn't know a lot about the virus. I mean, you know, now we know way more information, and, you know, you can collect the data and then make a decision for yourself. I mean, that's why we have the option for people who want to do Perrysburg Virtual Academy. People have options that they don't want to get together for Thanksgiving. Everybody has to weigh what is working for them.
Sure, and what I'm saying, we have 11 weeks of data. What if we gather five more weeks of data indoors, and then come back with a decision? And that's, again, throwing that out for discussion.
And my answer is, that's a terrible mistake.
I'm in line with your thinking for the high school. I think we're not ready, it is, but I think that our junior high students are not mature enough to be self-motivators to educate themselves, even with the guidance of our teachers. And I think our teachers are doing a wonderful job. And I think they're all working double-time, trying to get everything handled in a timely manner. So I'm not, I, I'm not criticizing the teachers-
Not at all.
-for what I see is a problem with our junior high children. I, I'm questioning the maturity that a child has to have at 11 years old, to be self-motivated, to accomplish what needs to be accomplished. So I am just 100% in favor of starting the junior high. I would start it tomorrow if, if it were my decision. But I certainly appreciate all the work that has gone in from the staff and the administration for, for making it possible that we can do it on the 10th. I just think that this is a critical, important thing for our children, and I would absolutely be in favor of it.
Anybody else?
Do we need a motion? Do we, are we just doing it? What's the, what's the procedure at this point?
I think it'd be fitting to get a, we had a motion to get the plan together, and the plan's been presented. And maybe we have a motion to proceed with the, supporting the plan?
Okay, I move that we open the junior high on the 10th of November for four-day-a-week in-school district, uh, education.
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please, Mrs. Harrington?
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
No.
I do want to say that Hudson, Ohio moved, is doing the same thing we're doing. And a parent sued the school because they didn't want their child to go back. The courts have thrown that out with prejudice, so the school is, I think that the courts are looking out for the schools, is what I'm trying to say.
I appreciate, appreciate all the discussion, and Mr. Hostler, and Mr. Christie, and the staff. I know you're working hard to get it done, and it'll happen, starting November the 10th. And thanks for everything you've done to this point.
And I think one thing, I think, I think the discussion here, I think the vote here reflects where everybody is with this issue. Because on any given day, on any given moment, you have a different feeling. You read an article, you see something, you hear something, you talk to someone, and that knot in the stomach begins, and you, you know, you have the reactions that we've all experienced today. I think the one thing that I'd like to just maybe provide a little bit of relief is that we've been pretty incremental in how we're doing this. And I think that maybe that provides relief to those that are, you know, let's wait and gather more data. And I certainly respect that view. Also, I think that we're taking those small steps forward that allow us to continue to collect that data, so we're not rushing too far, too fast. And so I hope that provides some relief to parents as we move forward, and those that are uneasy about this. And frankly, we're all uneasy about this right now. But I think, you know, I think we had a great discussion today, and I think the community appreciates. You know, and that shows that you all are listening, because we get emails, and probably in the next 10 minutes, we'll have another batch that will be on both sides. And, you know, I think, I appreciate the tough spot that you all are in, because this isn't easy, and-
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate the discussion and comments, even though I might have had a no vote. I'm certainly, as a board member, 100% behind this vote, it passed, this motion, we're moving forward. And the confidence that we have in our administration to, again, to Mrs. Downs' point in the last meeting, to get this done in the safest, best way possible. I'm behind them, I know they can get that done, and they've worked hard to do so. So the board had a great discussion, and Mr. Hostler, thanks for your presentation, and Mr. Christie. And we're moving forward and make it happen, thank you.
I think right now, the spread of the virus, as what I'm reading, says it's happening at small, in-person gatherings in our homes, is where, and I think the school can play an important part in sending home thoughtful guidance for Thanksgiving and Christmas, mask-wearing, making turkey masks or whatever. I think that that's, I think the education of the greater community is, should be, take care even at home. Take care. I know when I have my grandchildren over, they don't like it, but they all have to wear their masks. And they can't be in the same room as me without a mask. And when we eat dinner, I eat at one end of the room, and they eat at the other. I think that it's just for each one of us to bear our own responsibility for the spread of COVID.
Yeah, that's great, I'd like to add to that, too. You know, the other point of education that's available is reminding parents, guardians, that if your child is showing symptoms, please don't send them into the school. We've got a, you know, we've got policies on that, too, so, you know, it's a new, new challenge, it's a new day. You know, a cold may not just be a cold, a sniffle may not just be a sniffle. So as they're coming off of these holidays, Thanksgiving and Christmas, it's kind of important to remember that as well.
When, when they talk about the Mersey mobile testing, does that cost each parent when they request it, or?
So my understanding, and this is, we're still kind of developing this, but my understanding how it works in Oregon, and I don't know if there'll be a change, but they will, if the parent has insurance, they will bill the insurance, and whatever the insurance covers towards the testing, they'll accept that, so there wouldn't be any out-of-pocket. There might be some, a threshold that has to be met by insurance, but they're, they're not, the program in Oregon, they're not asking parents for money to do that. So, but that's one of the details we have to work through. So it wouldn't cost anything out of pocket, given certain circumstances, so. And we'll get more information out on that. Parents have the right to say no, so, but we'll give all that information out.
You know, I'm stunned at the difference in the prices of testing. I've been tested twice, and both times it's been no cost to me. But I have friends who've paid $150 for their test, and $75. And so I do, I do worry about our parents. I think it is such a great opportunity. And I know my, one of my grandchildren was sent home from school with COVID-like symptoms. And they called the doctor, and he was, he went in, and they, they tested for strep throat, and it turned out to be strep, so they did not test for COVID. So I think the more resources we can give our families, the better that we can control this whole situation.
Okay, thank you, thank you, good discussion, good plan, and let's move on to our agenda here. We have the consent agenda, Items 5 through 6. Again, again, school issues, the resignations and extended time, any, any motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
And any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mrs. Harrington?
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes.
Motion's passed, and that takes us to board discussion, Item 7. Any board discussion?
I, I wanted to say how much as a community, we appreciate Matt Kriegel and what he has done for our football program. He has brought spirit and life and vitality to our football. And I was so sad when I saw that he was not going to accept the position for next year. But I think he leaves us in a very good spot with a lot of enthusiasm for the program.
Agreed.
He's staying on as teacher, right? Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I saw the position was posted, right? Any thoughts, sir?
Interested?
I wanted to say one thing about the high school and the, you know, possibly opening up for the high school full four days a week. I would like the administration to seriously consider- I would like the administration to seriously consider the, is it January 5th, I think, Tuesday, January 5th, when, you know, K through eighth would be going back four days a week, that they go back on the same schedule. It would just make common sense for the whole district to go back then if we are going to have the high school go back four days a week instead of January 19th. That would give the people that are considering the Perrysburg Virtual Academy the, the same date, instead of then making that decision if we were going to go four days a week on the 19th. I think now, with us going for the junior high, a couple of the emails I've received is, well, shoot, I would like this option to do Perrysburg Virtual Academy, now that I know we are going four days a week, but that's not an option. So when the decision for the high school, I would highly encourage the administration to have it at the beginning of the quarter, so those families could have the option to make a decision, knowing moving forward what they're looking at. So that would be January 5th, I believe.
Yeah, I thought that one of the reasons why it was presented was after the Christmas break, that give them some two weeks' time to see how many cases are going to develop. That's the only thing I heard as to why they were starting.
Yeah, yeah. I did talk to somebody that does data analysis of, you know, COVID and all this stuff, and it wouldn't matter if you did it two weeks later. You perhaps would always see an increase when you came back, regardless if it was the 19th, or regardless if it was January 5th. If you're going to see an increase, it wouldn't matter if it was two weeks later after Christmas. If you started the 5th because you're getting people together, you would see an increase, potentially, not necessarily, but potentially, regardless if it was the 5th to the 19th.
But I think
If you look at data, that really doesn't make
I think that, taking that line of thought, the difference is you have 800 kids being impacted by that increase after break versus 1,600. And that's what we're trying to avoid.
Correct.
And that's, that's why we're allowing that. Also, the PVA right now, there isn't an option to drop back into it at the semester. So that's, that's not an option that we're extending at this time. So it's families that are looking to get out of the PVA back, and that wouldn't have an impact whether we, when we started the four-day return, so.
So when we get emails now about people saying, I wish my child could go in the junior high and the PVA, they're not allowed to, correct?
That's, that's the way it's set up, correct?
Right. So if a student would start at the high school, January 19th, but they wanted to go Perrysburg Virtual Academy, they would have had the option January 5th?
No. You have the option to opt into PVA at the beginning of the school year, for the year.
Oh, for the year? I thought it was semester.
And then you can opt out at the semester, but you can't opt in. So last week, when, the last board meeting, when we said that there isn't an on-ramp for PVA.
Oh, I thought it was the semester.
No.
Okay, okay.
So for me, I got just, you know, on top of the question about viral spread coming off of holidays, I'd want to hear more about, you know, maybe yes, maybe no. The other, I have a dozen, at least, other questions about the high school versus the junior high. I think once again, as we have done almost every meeting this year, we have couched what is an agenda item as a board discussion, a discussion here that is just, for me, really premature to have, so, you know. Noted about opening up earlier, something that we can put into a presentation?
I think we should be discussing it every meeting.
But, you know, this is starting to feel like an agenda item that we have not agreed to speak about, so. Look forward to hearing what the plan is on the high school as we gather more data. And Mrs. Eubank, your thoughts should certainly be worked into that consideration.
And I thought that was what board discussion was for, so, being new, I didn't know.
I think the good news about the college students coming home for Thanksgiving and Christmas is they all probably have had it already anyway. I look at the numbers and the parties and the things the kids are doing, and I think, oh my goodness gracious, it's kind of scary to welcome them. I, like, my granddaughter is in Columbus, and I really don't like her coming, oh, I don't, forget that, Abby, I didn't mean that. It scares me every time she comes to visit. I love to have her come visit, but I make her wear a mask when she's in the same room as I am, and I, because she is a young adult out in the college and just starting work group. I saw their Halloween party, I thought, oh, honey, mask, mask. But it's, it is scary. It's very scary.
Well, I appreciate the conversation, appreciate decision-making on this board, appreciate working with this board, and Mr. Hostler, for all you're doing. At this time, I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please, Mrs. Harrington?
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you so much.